Hey folks, we're gonna get started in a minute. This is Tucker is logging in and it's so. Should be on in a moment. It is a school committee meeting, everybody is muted, I will be unmuting all the school committee members so that they can have discussion. Yeah, I believe this is one watching the chat, so feel free if you have question or comment to type in the chat and. This is Tucker as well. As kind of allows allow various people to make comment. But give her another minute to log in, I think it's just a log jam.
I think I'm, can you hear me? Yep. Can you hear me? Hey Rich, you're muted now.
You are unmuted now, I am, I'm gonna unmute the other. I'm gonna, I'm gonna unmute the other school committee members. And then we can sort of. Get the show on the road, I guess.
Alright, and I apologize for the delay. Is LPAC joining us? Are they?
They are on.
They are. So this is. The August tenth, meeting of the Northbrook Field School Committee, special meeting to discuss the. The 2021 school re-year reentry plan, it is being recorded by the Northbrook Field Local Public Access. This time it actually is being recorded. And also Mr. Lind has a little bit of information he needs to share about the Zoom meeting.
So we are going to be doing a remote meeting through the use of video communication, it's important that we continue to respect the privacy confidentiality. The members of our community, including our teachers and staff and us. By participating in this remote meeting today, do agree that you will not save or go and share or post the session, or any photos from the session. I also agree that I will not be recording this. This meeting. And. As Mrs. Tucker said, it is being recorded and will be posted by LPAC. If you don't agree to these rules, please disconnect from the session now.
Um. So we are, you know, this should be relatively short meeting, I know that people have lots of questions. And Mr. Lind and the reentry committee are setting up forums for next week, so the week of August seventeenth, there will be. Several forums set up for, you know, divided by. Grade, so I know people have a lot of questions, I might suggest that. This might not be the meeting to ask a lot of those specific questions and to join the forums. Next week when they're scheduled, and also I know as well that the reentry committee has gathered a lot of questions that people sent in. And are putting together sort of a top facts sheet. So the point of this meeting really is for the school committee to vote on the plan that Mr. Lind and the reentry committee has put together. And I'm sorry, this is really weird for me, I'm on my phone and I can only see myself really, so. And that's really the point of this, so we will take, I would, I would like, first of all, I want to thank my school committee. Members, fellow school committee members, I, you know. I don't know how usual it is for school committee members to all have school aged children, which we do, so this is not only. You know, important to us, it's also very personal for us, it is a decision that we all have taken very seriously, we've had a lot of conversations. About it, I also want to thank Mr. Lind and the administrators and the reentry committee. I know that they have worked really, really hard in the past three weeks or a month. To put together an extremely comprehensive plan, the school committee has had the opportunity to look at it and it is. Very, very detailed and it will be released for everyone to read, so you know, free up a couple hours in your schedule because you're gonna need it. And I really do appreciate it. And. Is there some, there's something else I wanted to say, but right now I can't remember, but I think the first thing I want to do is. Vote on the plan. That we has, or Mr. Lind, do you want to spend any time talking about the plan before we vote on?
If you wanna, I don't know if you want to do the minutes first.
Oh, right, sorry, there you go, so we do need to approve the minutes from July twenty eighth.
Twentieth and twenty eighth, yes.
So we need a motion to approve the minutes, if anyone has any changes or anything.
I'll move to approve the minutes from July twentieth and twenty eighth.
All second. Okay, all in favor? Hi.
Right.
Five, nothing, great. Great, thank you. Alright, so. We're on to the new business, which is the approval of the return to school plan and just as Mrs. Tucker said. And rightfully thank the members of the task force, I would like to do the same, I know it's repetitive, but. These twenty four folks have dedicated. A number of hours, many hours to. Crafting a plan, the committee included the administrative team of school committee representatives, Mr. Canada. Would have held representative, Mr. Alad, teachers, including representatives from our teachers association. Nurses, our custodians, our shop steward for our custodian junior parents, so it was really a team effort. To, to make this. Past four Thursday nights, then we broke into subcommittees, five different subcommittees that. Took on various roles. Teaching and learning for the both schools, facilities and operations, health and medical management and information communication, so. It really was a challenge to pull together. This plan and it was literally building the plane, at least as it was taxiing down the runway, maybe it wasn't in the air yet. But we were certainly heading down the runway, trying to put together something as various guidance documents. We considered all of the guidance, we sent out several surveys, parents, staff. One where we asked questions, we received over a hundred questions, to be honest, I may reshoot that again. After people have a chance to read the document and more questions might come to light. We'll certainly use those as we build our forums for parents and the staff forum. We do plan on creating a, a separate email account, specific for questions, concerns or comments that may come up during the course of. Going through this very new and different normal. And. On July twenty eighth, we presented our preliminary plan, which was submitted to the state on July thirty first, for a hybrid learning model. Where essentially, we'll have four cohorts of kids. One cohort of kids will come on Mondays and Tuesdays, another cohort of kids will come on Thursdays and Fridays. And. From there, we have, so those are two cohorts, we have one cohort that will be all remote and. This is, this is a big change that we made during the course of discussions with the. Originally, when we sent out the student registration. The directions were to only mark your child down if they had a underlying health condition, your child did. After further discussion and reviewing all the guidance and, and having a very productive discussion. The reentry team decided that all parents could submit a request for remote only. You didn't need to have a child with an underlying health condition, could be that you have someone in your home, could be that this other concerns that you have. But, but any parent who would like to ask for remote only may do that. So that's one, the third cohort of kids, and the last cohort of kids is really by invite only, and this is for us. Are the highest need students, students that. Are enrolled in our substantially separate special education programs, our Rising Connect programs, preschool students, our English language learners. The impact on, on school not being in session is, is great for every student, but even more so for. For that group of students, so we'll be sending out letters to parents of those students, inviting them to attend every day. They will attend Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, all day, and Wednesdays will be a half day, but we're still working out the final details on what that might look like. For half days, but. It is really important that those students. Have access to school every day because they are, again, as I said, the most impacted. So this plan that was put in code contains all three models, but it focuses on the hybrid model because that was the model that was approved by. School committee and our preliminary plan, and that was for the directions from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Plan that had all three models, but the focus needs to be on what your preliminary plan was. And for us, as I mentioned, they approved that. July twenty eighth. Just a couple of notes about the document itself, it is one plan and housed within that plan are many links. Links to school based plans, links to state documents, C P C guidance. All sorts of different links, so all of those things can be accessed from the document. In addition, the table of contents is hyperlink, I know they're not, when you see the plan, they're not in that typical blue. Font color with the underline that says, oh, click this, they are, it's black, I don't know why it didn't change and I can't make it do it. But if you, if you. Put your cursor over any of the, the topics of the table of contents and click it. It will give you the opportunity to link to somewhere in the document, so you don't have to scroll through. It's thirty two pages long. And covers everything in pretty, I think, pretty good detail. And as I said, there are many links in there that probably add another fifty pages to this document. So rather than have it be eighty pages long, we decided to have thirty two pages with hyperlink, so if you're a parent of an elementary child and you need specific information. You can click links there, if you are just looking for information on transportation, you can click links there, et cetera, so. Tremendous amount of work, team effort, and I just want to thank everybody. For the help and support from the parents that have attended previous meetings and asked questions. Because those questions are really important to help guide us. Writing a plan like this to the folks at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for their guidance, the school committee, the administrators, the task force, it's been really. Challenging work, but in the end, really, in the end, it was something that I'm proud of, so with that, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Tucker.
So as I said, the really, the point of this meeting is just to vote on the plan. The school committee, I'm pretty sure we all have some things that we want to say. So before we, I asked for a vote, any of us to have anything we want to share about our feelings or how we're gonna vote. Please, why don't we start, why don't we start with Tim, because he was on the. On the reentry task commission, so. Can you unmute yourself there, Tim? I think you think you need to unmute him, Rich.
I'm looking for him. There you go, Tim.
Okay. Like Superintendent Lynn said, we, we put a lot of work into this plan. It's, it was. Relatively short timeframe to cover a lot of ground, and I think that with, as the news changed daily, it seemed at times we tried to roll with it and react. There is a lot of information and I actually have in front of me, I was reading through earlier today, all the questions from, from parents that I had printed out. And a great deal of them are answered in the document and in its links that are attached. But I think it, and Mr. Lind referenced the parent forums, the reason we want to do them next week is so that everyone has a chance to read through this document because. A lot of these questions went into it and went into how we prepared it, so your questions might be answered, but there might be questions raised by, by the document. It's something that is designed to be flexible. Like we, we talked about, we have three plans that we put together, one of them, which we prefer, which was the hybrid model. But it's, you know, it's built to explain each of the three plans and offer insight and. And to be flexible to respond to any changes in the current health crisis in the state, and whether things get better or worse, I think the plan allows us room to roll with that. That's about it, it was, it was a lot of work and the, the parent questions that were here, I, I mean, I personally read them in front of the, so in front of the committee. On Thursday night last week, as we were putting together the final touches to make sure they were addressed. But there will probably will be more and there'll be opportunity to have those conversations, but I think for the, for the amount of work that went into it and for the breadth we're trying to cover here. I, I think it's a fairly solid plan for what we've got going here. That, that's it.
Thanks, Tim.
I think you need to unmute whoever's next.
Who's next?
Maria needs to talk.
Alright.
Why don't we do Deb and Elizabeth and Ruth, and then I'll go last, okay? Does that work?
Alright, I'm unmuted, Deb, you got you.
So I also would like to thank the reentry committee, I can't fathom all that you've discussed and gone through. And I would like to thank you for your time, I also am not super psyched to be making a decision when I'm not the one entering the. Buildings myself, so I would like to thank those of you who are going into the buildings to teach, and those of you who have children also. I have that one tiny little bit. Um, I do think the state has kind of put us in an unwinnable situation and I would like you to know that. Beyond the fact that I have OCD and I analyze absolutely everything, I have lost sleep over this, like it's a, I'm taking it very seriously and I am very, very happy to hear that the third core cohort now can be. Expanded to parents who are interested in remote learning, not just those with underlying health issues. So with that being said, I'm ready to vote and very happy to hear about that change. And thank you to all who have also lost sleep and had this weigh heavily on them.
Alright, thanks Debbie, I'm gonna unmute Elizabeth. I think you're on, Elizabeth.
Okay. Thanks, Rich, yes, I would echo Maria and Debbie also, and thank everyone, thank the administration, thank the staff, thank the reentry committee. And I'd also like to echo Debbie's sentiments in that this has been a really. Difficult decision and there, it's a constantly moving target. And it's not a decision that anyone's taking lightly. I also want to clarify my own vote, because I will in fact not be voting in support of this particular plan. Not, and I, I want everyone to know that that does not reflect in any way that I don't value the work that the committee has done. In fact, on the contrary, and I realize there is a lot of gray area and. When we voted for the initial reentry plan, I did vote. I'm sorry, that's really loud. I did vote in support of the preliminary plans with the emphasis and recommendation on the hybrid model. And unfortunately, in the intervening times, my personal feelings about the viability of that model have changed. And I much, I so much want to see the kids get back into the school, I want them to be in person with their teachers, I want them to be able to see their friends. I just have concerns that the hybrid model will not be sustainable with the way that we see the current trends going. And so it's my opinion that a remote model would in fact be less disruptive and would. Perhaps give everyone time to better prepare for what many are viewing is inevitable anyways. Again, with that being said, I understand that the, the, the plan as it is allows us flexibility and I think Rich has done a great job. And the team has put, done a great job of putting together a plan that will allow us, in the event that we need to pivot, it will allow us to do that. So although I won't be voting in support of it, I'm. I'm, I'm, on the other hand, very happy with the flexibility that they've created, so I'm gonna mute myself. Thank you for hearing me.
Alright, Ruth, I think you're up.
I'm gonna turn my video off. I also want to say that I am. Very happy. With the reentry team and how hard they've all worked and. Doing thirty plus pages of a plan was not easy and. I'm sure that you all worked very, very hard. And while I. I am very much in favor of the hybrid plan and I believe that the children should be in school if possible. I do understand the concerns. And I, and I think that it is great that there is the flexibility so that if, if we do need to go back to remote learning, that it will hopefully be an easy transition. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Tucker, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Just, you know, it is a tremendous amount of work by the reentry team and the administrators, and like everyone said, very, very appreciative of all the work. I've already said, I very much appreciate my, my fellow school committee members, if people are unaware, I don't know how usual it is in states, but in Massachusetts. You know, it is the responsibility of the school committee, so this is our responsibility and we take it very seriously, um, you know. You know, I, I think one of the things that I've been saying repeatedly is that there is no good plan, you know, the, the best plan would have been to be able to go back to school. Like we would ordinarily, um, and I'm really, you know, disappointed and upset that that's not happening, but that's not really under our control. I think that. One of the things that I want us all to remember is that, you know, this is not a big town, we're all gonna make different choices for our kids. But we, we want to support one another, whatever choice we make, we want to support the school and our, our staff as much as possible. You know, if we are able to open under hybrid, if we are, end up in remote, that we want to remember that, you know, we are. We're all together in this, and I have a T-shirt that the student council sold me that says that, so. With that being said, so this meeting doesn't go on for hours, why don't we call for a vote, I need a motion for this, and Rich, do we need to do roll call for this, or just a regular vote?
That's a regular vote.
Alright.
But it'll be marked in the minutes based on people's votes.
Alright. So just need a motion and a second, guys, if you can unmute the school committee, so they can do that.
I think I am muted, everybody.
Alright. Go for it, Tim.
I'm muted for that voting.
I move that. I move that we. Vote now on the school, on the school reopening plan as presented by the reopening committee and Superintendent Lynn.
My second.
All in favor, raise your hand. I'll vote, oh, you need to get that, did you get that, Rich?
So I had Maria, Tim, Ruth and Deb in favor of, and then you were gonna take the other.
Yep, and anyone not in favor?
Sorry, Elizabeth, he got me with that third cohort, otherwise I was coming into this right with you.
It's, it's okay.
We're all in this together, like Maria says.
This is why we have multi-members boards, right?
Alright, so thank you very much, um, so I know that at least one of the school committee members may need to jump off right now. And thank you for the time, we do have a regular school committee meeting next week, which we're gonna attempt to do sort of in person. And with remote, so it is wonderful to see all of you on this with us, and we're gonna try and continue to do remote, so please join us monthly. Third Monday of the month, seven PM, it's a great time.
You're doing a hybrid school committee meeting next week?
I think we're going to try, yeah, well, we haven't fully discussed the details yet, but some of us will be in person at the school, but. People do not have to attend in person if they are, if they want to do remote, so. Anyway, so I think we mentioned the forums are next week, but however, certainly if any parents or staff that are on the call do have individual questions, I think there's at least one chat there. Has anyone, you could raise your hand, Elizabeth, does have her eye on the screen, if anyone has a question they want to ask right now, or if they want to just. Wait till the forums or.
Oh, Mrs. Tucker?
Yeah.
So I will send the plan out tomorrow to all parents and staff.
Okay.
By email, I'll share it on social media. I'll also include other information in there. I'll also include other information in there. Hopefully we'll have some dates for the, exact dates and times of the forums. I'll reset the, the question survey that we sent out that will allow people to ask questions. I would again encourage you to read the document before you ask your question because as Mrs. Tucker said, it may be some people.
It is extremely comprehensive and there is a lot of detail in there. But on the other hand, while we're here, someone has a question. We got a couple minutes.
I saw, did you have your hand up to Sheena? Yeah, so Rich, she's under the name Nick Feeley. If you can unmute.
I will unmute her. Sheena, I think you're unmuted.
Thank you. I don't really have a question, to be honest. Just have a comment. And I know it's a little bit too late. I've been trying to attend as many school committee meetings as I have, as I can. And I just wanted to let you know, although I do think you guys have been working great and you guys are doing amazing and you're doing an impossible job. I'm very disappointed that you didn't have the forums to hear directly from parents before you made a plan, before you voted, that you seem to not, you answered questions, but you seem to have not taken in complete consideration the voice of students and parents before you make your choice. So I just wanted to voice my disappointment and hopefully something you'll take in consideration in the future when you make decisions.
Well, we had parents on the, on the committee, on the reopening committee, and we sent out the surveys asking parents what their opinions were. So I felt like we asked the parents a lot for their input.
Also just want to point out what Tim said earlier, which is all the, we did have an opportunity, the reentry committee had an opportunity for parents to submit questions. And those were, as he said, shared with the reentry committee before they put the plan together. But, you know, I understand to Sheena that, that's something you would have preferred that we have done. So thanks for letting us know.
Well, can I add one other thing is that this, I think this is happening in schools and businesses around the state. You, you put a, you know, a mixed group of people together of varied, you know, roles in that school. And we, we tried to cover our grounds between teachers and like, like Mr. Lynn said, teachers and custodial staff and people who are doing lunches and nurses. And we also had parents and I was on it because I was in the school committee. But we, we just tried to keep the number of voices involved in the discussion to, it was still almost twenty-five people that were involved. And just the size of the task at hand, we, we felt that the surveys that were sent out was a way to get the questions brought into the planning process so that we could generate a document that we can now have the forums about so we can address further concerns if they weren't already in there. That's like, and like I said, it's a flexible document that we worked on. So the, you know, the forums will, I think, help and give everyone a chance to read all the eighty some odd pages of information in there. And then we can have further discussion, maybe more in-depth on certain subjects that strike people as having not been clear enough in the, in the documents. So we just wanted to make it so that we could efficiently produce a very comprehensive document that we can actually present to the public and to the staff and to everyone else that wasn't immediately on the committee to give their opinions and their analysis on what we've created.
And I, and I would also say we had two school committee meetings on July twentieth and July twenty-eighth where I think the committee answered many questions. So I, I definitely understand where, where Tashina's coming from, that it would have been great to be able to do that, but I think Tim's right that just the process for and the timeline for this plan made it really difficult to, to do, to do that.
Does anyone, anyone else?
I see another hand. Ellen is raising a hand.
All right, let me find Ellen. Ellen, you're unmuted.
I just, I just want to say thank you as a staff member with OCD and a multitude of questions that I have bothered Jean and Rich and Mark probably every day. They have been more patient and more kind. And as I was talking to him today, laughing and smiling with me. So thank you for your patience and putting up with, with every little OCD detail that I'm trying to get. Now, of course, we can't see in the future, but for just, because I know, I mean, just thank you. I, I feel I do sleep over this as well, but going back in every day. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work and being patient and always smiling and not losing your temper or your patience or anything or making me feel like I couldn't ask another one. So thanks.
Excellent.
So there was one question in the, in the chat, which I think actually is probably going to be more of a question for the forums with Jillian asked, will the remote option be teacher-led or student-led like the spring? It's okay if that can't be answered right now. Can you hear me?
Me? Are you talking, are you going to answer? Okay. I did. I just wanted to make sure. So if parents choose remote only, we're also, we have the same option for our teaching staff. If teachers need to choose remote only, they will be assigned as remote-only teachers. So teachers will be assigned a cohort of, they will be working with who are remote only. So if your child is assigned to a classroom and their teacher, their teacher will be teaching, is doing hybrid and in-person, your child will be assigned to a remote-only teacher. So I think that's, I don't know if that covers the question. Let me find you again, Maria. I can't find you.
He gave a thumbs up, so I think that means it covers it.
I know. She's the chair though. You should be like, she should be at the top of the list, but I can't find her. Come on. Misses, sorry. There's so many people in this. Forty-three people in the meeting.
Jillian answered, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Questions or, you know, I mean, we don't have to keep sitting here. We can all go on and wait for the reports to be released because it's a page turner. Anyone else? Elizabeth, have their hand raised?
Not that I can see. No.
If, if not, Mrs. Maggio's still on. She, she likes that last call kind of.
Okay. Before, before I call for a German, just making sure everyone does not need to ask a question right now. And I, I think there's a way the teachers ask it. It's, what are your questions? Okay, so I'm going to assume that everyone is our, is, is, has no questions right now. They're going to wait to read the documents. They're going to attend the forums. And I assume staff has the same opportunity, correct?
Absolutely. It'll be sent out tomorrow.
So I just, again, thank you very, very much to the administrators and the reentry committee. Thank you very, very much to my school committee members, fellow members. You know, you know how much I appreciate you all. And, you know, just, this is not, we're, we're, we're going to do our very, very best for the students and the staff to make sure that this all works out for the best.
Mrs. Tucker? May I ask one quick question for guidance? So the, the Department of Education guidance does request, does recommend the use of bus monitors. We did some work today and it would be approximately thirty-four thousand dollars if we had bus monitors for the entire year. Bus monitor's role would be to, to, to help seat kids. It's like assigned seats on the bus to ensure that masks continue to be worn, help with entry and exit so that it's coordinated and not, you know, too many kids bumping into each other. And it would allow the driver to focus on the road. It's a fairly big expense, obviously, that thirty-four thousand is recommended required by the department. If this school committee had any thoughts, it's a budgetary impact. I wanted to find out if the committee wanted me to pursue that or had some feedback. The guidance has written that we'll make effort to do that. You know, it's, it's tips that needs to be flexible. I don't even, I have worked with the bus company. We've talked a little bit about this. And we're not even sure if it would be a district employee or an AA transportation employee because of insurance and other kinds of things that go on there. There's lots to work out, but I think in general, I'd love to get the feedback from the committee on just the general principle and then I can work with the bus company and others put the specifics into place.
Well, personally, I, I think it's probably a good idea. And the, the second question is, have you identified where in the budget you might find this money?
So I would, I would put it in some of the CARES Act money that, that we are eligible for. I've outlined that a number of times for the committee between CARES Act and the coronavirus relief fund and technology grants and all the others. It would be from those staff funding.
I have a question. Is it, is it something where we would need to commit for the whole year? Or is it something we could do for half a year, you know, in the initial?
It would be as needed, but I have to plan the budget as if it would be the whole year.
Kind of a big number sort of thing.
Yeah, I just can't come in, you know, I can't plan half a year and then find out we have to go all the way and try to find money. Because this is part of writing the grants. I have to tell them what we're going to use it for. If we don't use it for that, we can write an amendment, spend it elsewhere if we need it. But I'd rather plan for the whole year and then lessen it if we, if we have, if we can, hopefully. And then plan for half a year and then find out we didn't plan for enough money and then try to find money, you know, the second half of the year. That's how I, you know, I would prefer to do it. I think it's good budgeting practice.
In terms of, I mean, and this is probably far too soon to even know this, but do you have a, this sort of a, an estimate of how many kids are going to be riding the bus? I mean, I know you sent out a survey. You asked that question.
Yeah. So what, I, I would estimate that we don't need to add any runs, which means we can, we can fit up to twenty-five students on a bus. The buses that AA uses with both Brookfield. And so I think we'll be limited to twenty-five or less on our buses.
Okay.
Than the teenagers? Like, I would think the older kids, just suspend them, like figure it out. That's one of my kids. So, you know, follow the rules or goodbye. The little kids are the ones I, they're more plasticky and.
I, I would agree with you, but for the driver to, to, to monitor that, that behavior and, and it's more than just violating a simple rule. Exposed. That is a bigger deal than just, you know, a kid yelling out the window or eating on the bus or using language they might not, might not be allowed to use or, you know, teasing someone else. Those are all poor choices and against the rules. If you don't like any of them, the potential for someone to be sick would be really.
Sign on like quarterly? I mean, I would hate to sign on a contract and then two weeks in we're remote.
Well, I would, I would, I would set it up where it would be as we do it. If it's through the bus company, I would communicate with the bus company that we're going to pay them or bus monitors if that's how we have to do it, based on the runs. Like if we actually make those runs. If, if, if it's our own staff, it would be a stipend position that we'd have to create. And, and again, it would be based on doing the work. Not, you know, a, a final number that says you're going to get this many thousands of dollars no matter what. It would be, you know, basically by the run.
Any other questions?
I don't think you need to vote necessarily, but I certainly would like feedback on guidance on, you know, what to pursue as we move forward.
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think it's worth pursuing. It would only be four because you said no additional buses so that they could do both high school and the elementary school run they wouldn't have to do.
An AM run would be both runs. Yeah. And a PM run would be both the afternoon runs, the elementary and the junior season.
I don't think we, do we have any objections to it?
No, we're information gathering. No, I wouldn't think so.
Awesome. I will do that. Thank you.
Is there any other things? Rich? Neglected. All right.
I don't think so.
Um, so we need the motion to adjourn, Debbie.
That's me. A move that we adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, five zero.
Thank you very much to everybody and we'll be, they'll be sharing, the school will be sharing the time for the forum. And as Mr. Lynn said, the plan is going out, so. All right.
Thank you so much for the school committee and to everybody, staff that joined and the parents that joined tonight.
We'll see you.
Have a good night, everybody.